First of March two thousand twenty-one at seven P M. And Ms. Jones, can you kindly do the roll call?
Absolutely. Councilwoman Gross.
Here.
Councilman Hartline.
Here.
Councilwoman Reeves.
Here.
Councilman Sigda.
Here.
Councilman Sprague.
Here.
President Stewart.
Here.
Vice President Yanazi.
Here.
Mayor Reeves.
Here.
Thank you.
Uh, first announcement, uh, and I'll, I'll, I'll turn it over to either Ms. Jones or Ms. Catania. Any updates on the Fourth Street Bridge?
I have nothing at this point.
I just have, uh, this same item on our agenda until we conclude, uh, which way we would like to go. So I can update the county. I can certainly ask them to be part of our, uh, council meeting next week, um, whatever council's pleasure is.
I thought we agreed to get rid of it.
I thought Alan wanted to keep it as a fishing bridge.
No.
No? Okay.
No.
Well, first off, we don't, we don't currently own it. Uh, the, the, the offer for purchase was made by the county. Um, just, just as a, uh, as a mechanism for it to, to be removed from the county inventory. And, you know, at first I think the county was looking for a quick answer. Um, you know, however, it's been an issue that has been on the agenda for many, many months. And I don't know if we need to be making a decision as quickly as we think we may need to make a decision. May, maybe I'll just throw this idea out, Ms. Catania. You could, you know, weigh in on your thoughts and comments is, um, you know, since, uh, we do have the T C, the T C D I grant for the two ninety-one corridor, um, getting, getting underway. Is this something that that task force should consider? The benefits of Eddie Stone potentially owning or not owning a bridge?
It, it won't be part of that corridor study if that's what you're asking.
Okay.
Just kind of follow up with what we had discussed before. Um, I think in order for the borough to have any interest, if you do have an interest in, in that particular purchase, we'll call it a purchase for a dollar or whatever, however, that transfer will be made. I believe that, um, you're going to, to affect maintenance on, on that bridge. So doing so, we had asked at the meeting with, uh, the county, what kind of, of maintenance costs do they typically see? Um, I think we've got to look at it from, they're not going to have to demolish the bridge, which is their, their intent. Um, they won't have to maintain the bridge. So is there any compensation that the borough could receive as part of this takeover? If, if you so choose to do a takeover, which would assist you in, in two things. One, to bring it up to whatever standard you want to bring it up to. The, the county's already said that they will do the minor maintenance issues that are on the current, um, inspection report. They are, um, they're not planning on doing anything more than that. Uh, you know, as the bridge gets older and you get more loadings on it, question is, do you open it to pedestrians? Do you open it to vehicular? Are you looking that it's only an emergency? And those are the things that we talked about before. So I, I think it's probably in the borough's best interest. Um, if you are interested in coming to a conclusion, do you want it or not? That you ask the questions of, of Delaware County. What is it that Delaware County, um, can provide as far as compensation to the borough? For the very reasons that I discussed.
Uh, can I ask a question about the bridge?
Sure.
I, I wanted to know if we chose to let them demolish the bridge and use the property on Eddie Stone's side to make a fishing area for the kids. Could we do that? Could we like knock down all the, uh, weeds and stuff and fill it with, uh, good landfill dirt? And make it an area where the kids could sit and fish? Would that be a possibility?
I can tell you, uh, and this is my standard answer when I don't know. I can tell you that anything is possible as long as you have the money to do it.
Wasn't the consensus that we, at one of the meetings, that we didn't want the bridge?
We were supposed to put up the, take care of the code and zoning books of Ashland Avenue. The bridge was forgotten about.
Yeah, but we discussed this bridge before.
Yes, many times.
We did prioritize the other two, as you mentioned, Councilman Sigda. But I just need, um, some type of decision to be able to get back to the county. So I don't think it was ever formally
Right.
stated that we did not want, um, the Fourth Street Bridge for me to get back to them. So if that's how you choose, I just need to know. That's all.
I think the zoning and code books are more important than the Fourth Street Bridge along with, uh, Ashland Avenue, which seems to be getting worse.
Yeah, I agree with that. I agree absolutely with the people with the sinkholes in Ashland. Hands down, that is horrendous for the residents. I agree that is something that needs to be addressed.
Got the hole in front of Bob Gleam's house and other ones. It's, it's not getting better, that's for sure.
No, it's not.
Uh, Councilman Sigda, I respectfully think you're just comparing two different items. This is that the items that you're referring to is, is expenditures that we would be making through the Community Development Block Grant Fund. And, and this would be an expenditure, uh, that would be out of the Borough's General Fund a, and a direct, uh, purchase from the county. That bridge has been closed since the opening of the casino. And the, the county has more or less turned a blind eye to the fact that the municipality chose to close a bridge that doesn't belong to the municipality. And what, one of the disadvantages, if we were to tell the county, we're not interested in purchasing that bridge, the county could turn around and say, well, it's our bridge. You don't have any rights to close that bridge. We want it reopened. And now you've got that overflow or, or, or exit traffic potentially coming out of the casino and, and, and overflowing into the village area, which defeats the purpose of closing the bridge originally. So, so the advantage I see, if you were to continue to consider the purchase of the bridge, is if it belongs to you, you do what you want to do with the bridge. If you want to keep the bridge closed, the vehicular traffic, you keep it closed to vehicular traffic. If you tell the county you're not interested in, in purchasing it, the county could turn around and potentially say, well, then remove all of your barricades from, from, from a structure that does not belong to you.
I don't think the barricades are up there. Last I saw, they were all gone. Them, them barriers are there, belonged to the guy in that, uh, the old Bill Maitland, uh, wellings shot. The last time I was up there.
So if it's the, if it's the consensus of council that we don't believe that we're even interested in the Fourth Street Bridge, we won't continue to waste wind and we'll remove it from the agenda.
My personal feeling is no. That's just me.
Ms. Reeves, what's your opinion?
Lock it down.
Again, again, the demolition would be a determination if it doesn't belong to Eddie Stone, that Eddie Stone doesn't dictate whether the bridge gets demolished or not. It's a county call. And the, the last inspection report that I, that I reviewed from the county showed that that bridge, you know, was, was still in usable condition. It's, it's not a bridge where I believe that they would determine that it is beyond its service life and they would just demolish it. Unless you, you saw something different in the report, Ms. Catania.
Hi, Tom Lee.
I, I see that. As I started talking, did you see me say, oops? Um, the, the report that is, as, as President Stewart said, it is in good shape. There, there are minor maintenance issues with it. It hasn't been used for quite a long time. So therefore, the, the rating of the bridge is not, has not degraded any. Um, the, our last conversation with the county and don't correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm, I don't have the notes in front of me, but was that they did not want to maintain. They are currently, as anybody that, that ma, that holds a bridge, biannually, there is a inspection report that's completed. And out of your liquid, uh, the inspection report or the inspection itself is, is taken out of your liquid fuels.
Okay. And how much does that cost approximately?
I, I, I can't tell you that. That's not anything that I would know.
Well, I, I, I think we certainly don't need more expenses.
Well, you also would be getting monies for the bridge too. There's a bit of an income. It's not, it's not a whole lot, but Penn Dot would give you money for that bridge.
Even if we chose not to open it?
I, I don't know the answer to that. If it were a working bridge and I, I, I don't know. I know that the county's been getting funds for it. But the county, county has also been expending those funds. So my guess is, since it's not in use currently, then it would still be, be, uh, similar to what the county's been getting.
I just, I just, I foresee more drug traffic coming through. That's all. If the bridge is open.
My, my only comment to that, Ms. Reeves, is if the borough chooses to purchase the bridge and we own the bridge, then we, we have the ability to dictate whether traffic flows or pedestrian flows across that bridge or whether it remains closed. If the borough tells the county, we're not interested, then the county may, you know, they may not, but they may say, we're opening that bridge to traffic. That's, that's the, that's the, that's the chance you're going to take.
Then that traffic becomes our problem.
It's the county's bridge.
Is it open now?
It is closed. It has been closed since the building of the casino.
Right, right, right. That's what I'm saying.
The casino has, 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 uh, been in contact with the borough and on multiple occasions over the past many years, asking for that bridge to be reopened. And, and the borough, each time we've been approached, we've refused their request.
Absolutely. That's why we never get any funding.
We won't get it anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Gross, what's your thoughts on the Fourth Street Bridge? Is it something we keep on the agenda or you're not interested in, in making the purchase?
I, I would like to know how much it would, how much it would cost. If we can get an idea, how much of a
One dollar.
And how much would it cost to upkeep? Like for five years? What would be the, uh, price? And if Penn Dot would give us money, how much money possibly could we have an idea of how much money would Penn Dot subsidize the bridge? A ballpark figure?
Let me do this. Let me call Susan, um, Cologne, uh, who is the, the engineer that is in charge of this program. She's a consultant for the county and see if she can get me those numbers. I thought that, um, we had asked, uh, the Public Works Department, the, the County Public Works Department for that information. I don't know that we had received it and I may be wrong about that, but I, I thought we had asked them for that.
I, I would like to see the kids use it for fishing. I think that would be a great thing for kids to use.
Any other comments from any, any other members of council before I move on? It sounds to me as if Ms. Catania is going to reach out and get some additional information for us.
Thanks, Lisa.
Sure.
Thanks, Lee.
Have we received any updates from the county regarding the financing of the L E D streetlights?
Nothing on my end. I know that, uh, Michael Fuller is working up some figures with additional changes. Um, he has yet to get back to me. Um, he said last week he would get back to me. So I will hopefully have a report from him to share with you for next Monday night.
I actually am in touch with D V R P C. Uh, they reached out to another of my clients. And in, in her, Liz, in her email, it was Prospect Park Borough, had mentioned that the county funded financing. So I asked her whether that had been, um, resolved with county council. And she wrote back and she said she had no idea. So, um, I don't think that there's any answer at this point, whether county council is, is willing to go to the, uh, Delaware Valley Finance Authority as Montgomery County and Chester County has done. Um, that's how they are being funded so that the individual municipality would be a, a take a loan from the county. And that's, that's how it was done, um, in prior, in the first phase. But it has not been, um, discussed at this point for the second phase, which is the phase that you're in. That's what was the holdup prior.
So it's another item that we'll continue to keep on the agenda, touch base with on a monthly basis. Del Cora, I know we've had a meeting with the Del Cora, a couple of follow-up discussions. Um, I believe everything's been resolved in regards to how our sewer fee is calculated and would be incorporated into our tax bill. Is there any questions that anybody has, uh, about Del Cora? Uh, otherwise I'll ask Ms. Jones to delete the Del Cora from our discussion topics.
I actually would like to ask one other municipality how they made out in the last couple of years that they have had, had Del Cora off and have gone with the other guys. I mean, I know Marcus Hook just had Del Cora, um, on the books. Those are just starting with them guys, but I want to talk to a municipality that has had them for a few years and see how they have made out with them before we give up, um, if that's okay.
Can you re, can you repeat that, Ms. Gross? I got a train, a train whistle that kind of cut me off.
Okay. What, what I would like to ask, if I can talk to another municipality that has had Aqua for at least four years and ask them how they have made out with them? Because Marcus Hook just started with them and see how, if they've had any issues. And if they have, how have they corrected it and were they happy with it? If that's okay, and I'll get back to you next month.
Can, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Councilwoman Gross, are you looking for somebody that was doing their own sewer and then going, then sent their system or sold their system or transferred their system to Del Cora? Are you just looking for a municipality who has Del Cora as their, the owner and maintenance for the system?
Uh, I'm looking for, uh, a borough or township that has given up their sewer system. And I wanted to know if they're happy with Aqua or whatever for the last four years and to see if they've had any issues with them. And if they have, how they resolved it before we get rid of our sewer system.
Well, the reason that I was asking the question, there are several municipalities that, and this is, it's for years, over twenty years. Uh, for example, Upland Borough, Parkside Borough. They, they've had, um, their system owned and maintained by Del Cora for many, many years. Um, but if you're looking for somebody that is not as recent as, as Marcus Hook, Chester High, not Rose Valley, excuse me, Rose Valley, um, probably five, maybe ten years ago. So that may be somebody that you could talk to.
Yeah, Andrew was very helpful. He did suggest that, uh, my concern is that we have a lot of senior citizens in Eddie Stone. And that was my big concern about the prices of the sewer system. And he suggested that if we did a contract to put something in it for the first couple of years to protect the seniors for a, a, a high price. So I don't know if that is feasible, but if it was, I would like to see his seniors to be protected.
That's, I hate to say this, but I'm having a real tough time hearing you. And it may just be me.
Now, um, when I talked to Andrew at Marcus Hook,
Yes.
I, I told him my main concern, one of them, was all the senior citizens we have in our town and about the price increase that they may have to absorb. And he suggested that our borough, when we do a contract, would ask Aqua to, uh, do a, a stay of execution for seniors for a couple of years so they don't have to absorb, uh, hike in prices. And, uh, he said that might be something good for us. So I don't know if any other municipality did that or thought of that. Um, so that's what I'm, I wanted to ask another municipality if they, what have they done to help their seniors?
And Ms. Gross, just to be clear, we have not yet engaged in any conversations whatsoever with Del Cora or Aqua in regards to them taking over our system. You know, it was something that they touched on during, uh, the telephone conversation. You know, however, you know, we, we have not had any discussions whatsoever about that as of yet. Um, and it's, and it's nothing that's going to happen in the immediate future because of the fact that we're, uh, in the process of sending out our tax bills that have a sewer fee for two thousand twenty-one. So, you know,
But I'm thinking ahead.
Okay.
And when we decide. I want to ensure that all our ducks are lined up. And if there is something we could do for our seniors, I would like to have the opportunity to have that in writing.
Okay.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Ms. Jones, Andrew, Ms. Stillwell, can you give us an update on where we stand with the, uh, financial audit for two thousand twenty?
Yes, um, Drew Hannah emailed me, um, asking for some information, which I'm going to have to talk to Dawn and Christina about, uh, regarding the full bank account numbers, because I couldn't seem to get them off of Sharon Bank's website. Um, so I think they're starting, they want to start the audit in March, sometime this month, probably the second or third week. So Drew's getting ready to send down the numbers. At the year end, all our reconciliations are done. We're ready to go. So, um, just waiting for them to get them the information.
And our due date to the D C E D in regards to the, uh, fi, the filing for our financial audit that is due on what date?
I believe it's April. I'll have to confirm that with, um, John.
And then the last item about trash, can you remind me about what the trash is about, Dawn?
Yes, we had this item on, on our agenda and I just wanted to follow up with everyone. Um, last month we did hire, uh, a new, uh, employee with a C D L. Um, currently I'm waiting for a copy of his, uh, driving report. Um, he does have his application in. I did speak with him and he would only be available from seven A M. till noon most days. If we give him enough notice, for instance, if our head guy would be out, uh, he might be able to take vacation. Um, there was a second, uh, Eddie Stone resident who was interested in the job. Um, a little way above our pay rate, but again, I can, um, you know, talk to you guys in, um, executive session next week. Um, I do have a second applicant and, um, you know, obviously a borough resident and, uh, with a C D L. So I can give you more information moving forward in exec session next week.
Thank you.
Bill, the due date for the
April first. Uh, next Monday will be our, uh, regular meeting of council. Uh, council will meet executive session at six o'clock and then our regular meeting will be at seven. Ms. Jones, any write-to-know requests that have not been fulfilled?
No, everything has been fulfilled.
Uh, at this time, I'll open it up to any citizens' concerns. If anybody is interested in addressing council, well, should I wait for, we will do that at the, the, after the committee reports. I'm sorry. Uh, nothing to update on admin and policy. Uh, emergency services, Mr. Muse, so I saw an email from you earlier today, uh, regarding the, uh, finalization of the new collective bargaining agreement with the F O P Lodge twenty-seven. Can you give us a quick overview of where we stand with things?
Sure, of course. So as you recall, at our February regular meeting, the, uh, board approved a new C B A with Lodge twenty-seven for the Eddie Stone Borough Police, uh, and that has been executed. So we now have an intact C B A with Lodge twenty-seven that is fully retroactive back to January first, twenty twenty. Um, you, there were two questions. One, I think some member of the public asked about the legal costs involved with the, uh, the police contract litigation. Um, and that total, uh, was twenty-three thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty-four dollars over thirteen months. And as we know, there were two, two actions, one in the, uh, Pennsylvania Labor Relations Board, another action in the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. Uh, both of those are now over. Uh, and of course, lots of discussions, uh, with council for Lodge twenty-seven. Uh, but against that, um, I, I sent the new contract to, uh, Jim Kennedy over at Thomas J. Anderson and Associates. Of course, our actuary. And I know one of the big issues we've been dealing with in the last year is, is the M M O payment, right? I think we were behind on some payments from years past and, and there was a lot of concern about the contract that was, I don't want to say approved, but voted on in a lame duck status back in December of twenty nineteen. It would have been very expensive for the borough. Uh, and so the, the revised version that we agreed to with Lodge twenty-seven will actually save the borough over forty thousand dollars a year. Uh, and as, as Jim Kennedy noted, you know, that over a ten-year period, that's, that's four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, um, you know, the legal costs, I know it took time. I know there were costs, but the borough came out way, way ahead with this.
Peter, what was the change in saving forty thousand dollars?
So it was the elimination of the, uh, reduction of the retirement age. That was the main cost. So I think the original contract had dropped the retirement age to fifty and that was the big M M O hit. We eliminated that. And then there was an additional, you know, if, if a police officer served for a longer period of time, there was an enhancement to and that was dropped as well. So, but the main, main driver of the cost was the reduction of the retirement age, which was eliminated in the actual contract that was approved last week. So that was a big benefit to the, to the borough. I know Dawn has been concerned about M M O and, and this will be helpful. So it's all signed, it's all done, it's all executed. Um, you know, I'll work with Ms. Stillwell and we'll, uh, we'll talk of healthcare uh, with Lodge twenty-seven as they've agreed to do. Um, not as a negotiation, but if there's ways to structure the borough's healthcare costs that'll significantly reduce the cost of the borough without in any way negatively impacting members of the Lodge. They're, they're willing to hear that. That's the update on
Is, is the healthcare issue something that Ms. Stillwell will take the lead on or is that something Ms. Jones will take the lead on? I think that, Ms. Jones, you have the relationship with, with other Dr. Gallagher, correct?
Correct.
So is that something you could, you could set up to, to where they can come in and give a presentation in front of the rank and file or in front of at least the negotiating team for the F O P and, and see if it's something that we can, uh, come to an agreement with?
Absolutely.
And I believe the other out, the other outstanding issue is is the retroactive pay. Can you give us an update on that, Ms. Jones?
All being worked on, both chief lieutenant have started the process. Donna Stillwell has talked with them. We are going to try and get everything started. The process started of getting everyone all of the money that's owed.
We're hoping to be able to do that for the next pay. So it depends on when she can get that information. I'm actually gonna follow up with him, make sure we can get that done.
Members of council, any questions to Mr. Muso or Ms. Stillwell regarding the resolution of the police contract? The only other emergency art services issue is the upcoming negotiation with the unionized D N Ts. And Mr. Muso, I believe you've got a couple of dates that we've already set aside to to begin those negotiations, correct?
We we do. We are first meeting with I A E P Local 19 will be Wednesday, the 10th, and then Wednesday, the 16th, and then Tuesday, the 24th. So looking forward to getting started on that.
Active E M Ts, do you have now? Anybody?
Seven. We have seven. I have, yes, I have two, two definites for the agenda next week to ask for council to approve to hire, possibly a third. I just have to schedule another Zoom meeting this week to interview.
Okay, thanks, Dawn.
Thank you.
People providing you with background checks and all?
Yes, most, most do. I most, some I have to request, some we don't even consider because they still apply without the E M T cert.
And one last item for you to put on the agenda next week, Ms. Jones, is I believe that the chief has got all of the paperwork returned for the hiring of our next part-time officer. So if you could put the motion to approve the hiring of that part-time officer on the agenda for next week, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Mr. Sprague, I yield the floor to you regarding finance and audit, anything that you've got regarding code?
Nothing as far as finance and audit that hasn't already been covered. As far as zoning code, the only thing we really have outstanding right now is industrial highway. And as of the middle of last week, we still have not heard anything from them in the last month. Lisa, has anything changed with that in the last couple of days?
I received a text message from Dawn at, what time is that? 5:30, 6 o'clock, 6:30?
1:00 p.m. on Saturday, yes, but my day started at 8:30 a.m. with text messages and phone calls.
No, 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 I'm talking about today that we received plans. We received today.
After 3:00 p.m.
Boxes of plans. A, I don't, I don't know what they are. It says supporting documentation, and it's booklets. So yeah.
Large box, large plans that, yeah. I believe they want us to drop everything to be able to review this within one week, or actually by the end of this week being Friday. I certainly, you know, have to first get them to all of you to review, get them over to our engineer's office and ask everyone to drop their plans or drop their schedules to review these plans in hopes to have some type of headway on this.
I mean, how realistic is that, to be to ask for another continuance?
Absolutely.
Seriously, Peter, I mean, my office, my, if we absolutely had to, I can really push. But I hesitate considering the fact that for over a month, we've heard absolutely nothing, and we get something the day of the meeting, knowing that we would be discussing it tonight.
All right, I will, I will reach out to their attorney and ask for an additional continuance, given the late production of a substantial number of documents.
Appreciate that.
We'll get these over to Lisa's office first thing tomorrow morning. Anyone else that is interested, just let me know, and I will drop them off at your home. They're very, very large and heavy plans and books. If not, they'll be up here for anybody that wants to stop by.
I like to pick up a set.
No problem, Beth, I'll drop it off.
Thank you.
Would you mind dropping mine off?
You got it. I would prefer, this is not something that can fit in your mailbox. I'll try to put it in a bag in between your two doors, if that's okay with you.
My way home and just text you, you can run it out if you don't mind.
Perfect, absolutely.
You can grab me a set too, Karen.
All right, no problem.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll text you tomorrow, Dawn.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Council President.
That's all you have. The Alliance Group is moving forward. That's that's some good news. The Alliance Group has also reached out through their solicitor and has been working directly with our solicitor, requesting some relief from the scheduled permit fees. And as all members of council are aware, we did run into some issues recently with the permit fees charged at A Gate and the new water wall or pier. Okay. What's the, what's the proper terminology, Ms.? Bulkhead? Bulkhead construction at 10 terminals. What the Alliance Group is looking for is to approach the permits on a global perspective. And the borough in turn needs to reach out to Catania and come up with the estimated cost of where we think Catania would be. I believe, Mr. Muso, you and then Alliance have kind of almost come to terms or have at least come to enough of a of a number that we would be able to present it to council next week, correct?
That's correct, and I I think I'll I'll talk to council about this in executive session next week. And I'll also reach out to Catania to work out that agreement so that I have to present to council in executive session, and then they'll they'll vote on it next week.
Public works. Ms. Jones, how's the trash truck situation?
Oh, boy. Yeah, the trash truck, knock on wood, don't jinx me now, is running. Trash went very well. We have Kevin back. We have our new part-time hire. We are a very fortunate community that we have two days of trash pickup. And every Monday and Thursday, our streets are overwhelmingly loaded with trash. I'm not sure where all this comes from, but I'd like to put a shout out to our streets department for doing a great job today in the rain throughout the snowy days. And right now, you know, if there's options to be discussed that I think we either need to outsource our trash or just continue to feed money into this. I believe it's a 2015 trash truck that is, in my opinion, in the shop more than it is on our streets running fully when we need it. I'm sorry.
You're right, Dawn.
And obviously, I do not want to put my guys out of any type of work. There are possibilities moving further ahead. If we were to outsource our trash, we could hire just the truck and the driver, keeping our guys working. Or we could outsource it where you bring, you know, a whole trash truck company in. I prefer to keep our guys on because they do a better job. They're from Eddie Stone. They care more about the community. They know the people. They know which residents may need, you know, a little assistance with the trash, whatever it might be. But that's where I stand, and I'm gonna, you know, obviously suggest that to you moving forward to keep our guys working. I just don't know the best solution right now with our trash truck. Obviously, I don't want these continuous fees. But it's just something that has to always be brought to the table so everybody's on the same page.
That old, that's a sad part for all that money the truck costs.
Yeah. It's still running, we're still pushing, but, you know, right now, obviously. You know, we're gonna run with it. But just in case, in case anybody else wanted to look at for other options, I have been looking into newer trash trucks. But of course, Donna Stillwell will have my head if I'm looking to spend any money right now, which we're trying not to. But just to kind of foresee in the future, we might need to go that way.
Unless we get a deal on a used one, you know, something about three, four years old. This one has a computer problem, and you know as well as I do, it has to go all the way back to Delaware, the Bay Shore. And sometimes bringing it back, it goes out, you know, it's, it's, I don't know what the problem is because they don't know. So, you know, it's a shame.
That technology.
Yeah. That's for sure.
And well, we're just gonna keep our fingers crossed and keep picking up trash and move forward until
That's right.
Next month again.
I'm glad Kevin's back.
Yeah, that's great.
So am I. The guys did well within Kevin's absence, but it it's a lot. It's a lot on all of them, even when Kevin's there. But then it's even more when he's out. So I just want to say thank you to our crew for working so hard to keep our streets clean. And they are getting to the potholes, but you have to let the ground dry in order for the fill-in to be able to go in and absorb. Is that right, Lisa?
Well, it'll absorb, but if it doesn't, if it's not dry, it's not going to to adhere. And then they're just gonna, as soon as the next rain comes, you're gonna see it down the street.
So we are working on those terrible potholes that are out there, so.
They all been wonderful. We've always had really good guys on the truck. They've always been thoughtful, picking up after stuff drops. We've been very lucky. Truly have been lucky.
So from a facilities management standpoint, the only thing I would discuss would be the, an update on the R cap grant. But I'll defer that until we get to the engineers' report with Mr. Ms. Catania. So, Mr. Yanazie, I'll yield the floor to you with community development, anything's going on in the rec world?
Well, I would like to add a discussion about the Easter egg hunt that's coming up. I want to put that on the agenda for next, for the next meeting. And there's gonna be a blood drive on March 26th from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Lighthouse Hall. Just want to make an announcement.
Is the blood drive being sponsored by the rec board, or is that?
I believe it is, yeah. I mean, that's who told us about the blood drive.
What date? March what?
March 20, March 26th from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m.
And I would just like to add to Councilman Yanazie's report. I'd like to put a big thank you out to Home Depot of Fawcett Ridley, Home Depot. They were kind enough, we took over a letter to Home Depot, and they donated two brand-new shelving units for our recreation department for at Lighthouse Hall. We're trying to get it all organized over there, so I wanted to say thank you to them. And thank you to Walmart for providing new shelving for our pantry that we're building here at Eddie Stone Borough, along with the pantry items they also donated.
Very good.
Ms. Catania, the engineers' report.
Thank you. Let me go to our cap first, since that that was something that that was deferred. The chief and Dawn and I met with our architect, taking a look at what we had done. We did that rather quickly when we did the R cap initially. We think that we're going to end up with an addition of about 8,500 square feet. With that change, we will not have a standalone council room, but we will have a conference room, which I think is more of a necessity than a new council rooms, since we can do something with Joe Use Hall to to work that out, that scheme out better than it is currently. So we're working on that. Right now, Clarice Jones, who is our architect designer, is going through the the flows. We have certain flows that we need to have. The chief has areas that are part of his accreditation. So we've got to make sure that we're we're following what he's already reviewed with the accreditation group for for that R cap. Once we have that, we'll have a new cost estimate and get the information that's required to get back to D C E D in the, probably within the month, as long as everyone's happy with with the design work. That precludes the one property that we had discussed. So that, that's, that's a positive thing. The negative to that is that we will not have a driveway off of No, not eighth. Why can't I think of the street?
Eddie Stone Avenue.
Eddie Stone Avenue, yeah. So we're still looking at some possibilities there. But with with costs being what they are, what I tried to do is assume that we got $500,000 for the R cap. The initial plan for the, for the redevelopment of the existing Borough Hall was a little bit over $3 million. So we're looking at a building that's, that's $2.5 million is where we're we're heading. At this point, we're hoping that that number will run true. Once I have a cost estimate, I'll know better. But we came up with a, with a formula, I think, or what I thought, that if we went up to 9,100 square feet, we would be within that range of $2.5 million for the building. Wanted to mention, there is a second project that's out there that is still outstanding, and that's the Dunkin' Donuts. And we had received last month a request from the attorney for that applicant. And the consultant was supposed to reach out to our office to review our review comments so that we were all on the same page. I haven't heard from, from Bill at this point, Bill Kujic, who was the engineer for for Mr. Body. I I'm not sure where they they stand right at the moment. But at this point, there isn't anything the council needs to do. They do have a preliminary conditional approval, and that runs for a period of five years. So so at this point, we're okay with that. I have three proposal requests out for work that needs to be done in the sanitary sewers. We have plates on, on a manhole because of the cracked lid on the manhole cover and the frame. So I'm still, I I have not gotten any, any proposals back from the three that that I've reached. I've got to call them and find out why. I was hoping I would have them for the, the meeting tonight, but I will have them for the meeting next week. On my report is an invoice and a change order for the lower roof. I'm going to tell you that there was some errors in the invoice. And we reached out to Holton on Friday and again today and did not get a response from them. I'd like to put it on the agenda, however, but it's a 50% I'd like to put it on the agenda, however, but we're, that's a fifty percent, um, release or payment to them. The reason I'm doing fifty percent is that we have not received any warranty information or the maintenance bond. And that was one of the concerns when we started this project with them. Uh, that they were using two different materials and we told them they could not. They insisted that they could get the warranties for, for, and until I have that information, I don't wanna release all the money, although they've completed the project. Um, otherwise, there is a notification that the D C N R grants uh, have opened. That deadline is in April. We'll have to do a resolution if, if councils prepare or suggesting we do any projects. And that is also fifty percent match. So just wanted to make that clear. Lighthouse Hall is not eligible for a D C N R grant unless we do a feasibility study. We set a feasibility study out last year in an application to D C N R, but we were unsuccessful. So, um, I don't know if council has another project, but we've gotta get working on that. The fourteenth of April is the deadline. Otherwise, I can just report general progress.
Lisa, you're gonna build the building on Seventh Street side, right?
That's correct.
How much for that house? Except we have two lines on Eighth Street you said that would bite into the budget. What's the difference between the two lines and the house? You know, so we know what we're, you know, what happened.
Well, number one, um, I, I really don't wanna discuss the houses. We can certainly do that in the executive session. That's real estate. And I would suggest, I would suggest that we do that in an executive session.
Okay.
Um, as far as, as putting something on eighth, there are two lines, uh, that run from the pump station, the existing pump station. One of which is the force main for the pump station, which means that we would have to relocate those two lines in order to put any kind of a building in that particular area. You all have a copy of where I have marked out. Um, I've marked it up on the plan as to where those lines are. Um, as far as costs are concerned, I, I don't have, I didn't do a cost estimate. Um, we have not at this point done anything as far as appraisals of, of properties that we may be interested in, in purchasing. Um, so I don't know that I have a comparison. I can certainly get a comparison or a cost estimate for replace. I believe it's a twenty-four inch and I didn't bring the, the paperwork with me tonight. I believe that's a twenty-four inch line that would have to be, have to be relocated. And then the force main, which is either an eight or a twelve, and I don't remember which of those. So we've got, um, I'm gonna say it's probably close to a half million dollar project. Because we also have to bypass the pump station. That's in order to do that force main. So we've got, uh, again, I don't have any of those numbers. I just don't know that it makes sense to put, um, to put a separate building, uh, when those costs are also necessary. But we certainly can talk about it further. I, I don't know what, uh, that's the best answer I can give you at this point.
I appreciate that. If you, if you can get a cost comparison between there and the other side, I appreciate that. So that way, when people approach me and say, why didn't we build it over here when we own all this land? We went over to there and bought houses. That's all. I just need a cost comparison.
Understood.
Thank you, Lisa.
Any questions or comments regarding the, uh, engineer's report?
No.
Ms. Cross, any updates on the history committee?
Uh, no, not yet because of COVID. We can't be too close to one another. But I will be going up to Borough Hall soon. Hopefully tomorrow night I'll start looking through some of the books and get some ideas what's our, we do have an idea what our next project is. But yeah, but I wanna, when we get to new business, I have something.
I didn't hear you. So you have something when we get to new business?
Yeah.
Okay, switching off to new business. Ms. Cross, the floor is yours.
Okay, as some of us know, March is Women's History Month. And Despo Tattersall started this over a decade ago. And we get schoolgirls from Eddie Stone Elementary, fourth and fifth grade, write an essay on the woman who has been most influential to that child. And then we read them or the person in charge reads them. And we have the child from fourth and fifth grade read it to council, the winner. And each girl from fourth and fifth grade receives a fifty dollar gift certificate from the borough. Okay, and since, uh, Despo did it, Kelly did it. I'd like Karen to continue that because we couldn't do it last year because of COVID. And the kids are in school now more than before, so we can do it this year. So if that's okay with you guys, I'd like Karen to continue the tradition. Okay, so Karen can get everything set up and done. So come April, we can have the essay read from, from the girls and she'll have everything set up with Jeff, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
My, my only question would be, and Ms. Reeves, you might be able to clarify. I, I, I believe we did not restrict it to girls only. It was open to any student in the fourth grade, correct? Male or female?
Fourth or fifth grade student and one fourth grade student, one fifth grade student. Um, and I believe the, whoever they wrote about also got like a little bouquet of flowers.
But the student could be male or female, correct?
Correct, correct.
I always thought it's either or. But I tell you what, some of those have still left that, the words in my head. One child in particular is thirty years old now, but she did one about her grandmother, Elizabeth Mucker. Who, her grandmother was a truly an inspiration to her because she fought cancer three different times. And she continued to struggle with it and fought it. And she told Elizabeth how important life was. And you fight and you fight till you can't fight anymore. And that's stayed with that little girl who is a forensic scientist now. So, uh, I just remember that so well. And some of the other girls that did too. It was like kudos to these girls who stood up and read their essay. That's what I remember. That's all. Just so proud of all those kids that read, did all the essays.
Despo did that for about twenty years.
Yeah, I know.
Good job, Beth.
Ah, they were, I'm just so proud of all those kids.
And Ms. Reeves, Ms. Reeves, you're willing to pick up the flame and continue on, correct?
Yes.
And you'll just touch base with me in regards to the fifty dollar gift card and I can get that ahead of time?
Yes.
Thank you. And the flowers if needed.
Okay.
Any other members of council have any new business items?
Uh, I'd like to, uh, talk about how Eddie Stone, as a borough, was able to donate to Gondales Drive for getting water down to Texas. I wanna extend my gratitude to Dawn for securing the pallet of water from Walmart. Walmart for supplying the, the pallet of water, um, and, uh, uh, council president for transporting it over there.
Very nice.
Good job.
Very nice.
Yes, Brinker Simpson was in there donating water too. So a big shout out to them. Thank you.
Donna, the thank you to Brinker Simpson as well.
Council, all the other new business, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I have family in Texas, so that's nice.
The only other new business that I have and, uh, Mr. Musa now that he's put a, uh, a lawsuit behind him. I know we've had some discussions regarding the, the man letter, uh, for errors and errors and omissions and professional liabilities from our previous, uh, financial director slash borough manager. Um, Ms. Stillwell has, uh, been compiling a list of additional costs uh, that the borough has incurred, uh, regarding some, some extra accounting work that the municipalities had to pay for, uh, due to errors by our, our previous financial director. Um, I believe the last item that we need to discuss is in regards to the firehouse and the no bid work that was performed in two thousand nineteen. Uh, as, as all members of council recall, call, it was a significant finding uh, by our auditor. And that he specifically noted that in his opinion, it was a violation of the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry Bid Guidelines that would result in a ten percent surcharge of the full amount of the contractor purchases. I believe that there was basically two items of work that were performed down at the firehouse. Uh, the, the first was the mold remediation. The mold remediation, we were given a price by Pro Action in the amount of just about twenty-five thousand dollars. The auditor has determined that, uh, based on lack of documentation, that, uh, it would not be considered a, an emergency project, project. So, so with that being said, I believe that that's something that needs to be added to the list of errors and omissions by our previous director.
Where's the file? There's a whole file with that crap in it, Bill. Where's the file?
Well, I don't know where the file is. However, we do know that it was a twenty-five thousand dollar expenditure. It was no bid.
It was declared an emergency by the borough solicitor. And through the insurance company, you know that, you were on council. And the file, mold file was there.
Well, fir- first off, there's no documentation in any of the meeting minutes and no opinion letter from our solicitor that it was an emergency situation.
There's all the file.
Also, Mr. Mayor, you, you, you do realize that that mold situation had been there for many, many years.
Oh, now, now you're saying it was there for many, many years, but you knew nothing about it, right?
Although I. I didn't say.
That's what you said in the past. You didn't know anything about it. And that you were an engineer. Ain't that what you said, Mr. Stewart?
I didn't say, I didn't say that I didn't know anything about it. What I said was, if it was there for many years, it can necessarily be declared an emergency because we know about it for many years.
It actually got worse over the years.
Understood. And I, and I don't disagree with the need for the repair to be done. However, I do disagree and our auditor has brought it to our attention that it was a violation of the, of the, of the bidding requirements.
And he also said that there was no mold file, right?
Uh, he said there was no documentation in any of the meeting minutes, nor any documentation that was presented to him that declared it an emergency.
Okay, I'll, I'll add that. We'll discuss any litigation strategy in exec session next week. But we'll have a final number and talk to council about proceeding.
And just, just for the record, Mr. Mayor, is it was not an insurance claim. And Ms. Jones has reached out to the insurance company and the insurance company said there was never a claim filed.
That's because there were already, there were already two water, there are already two water claims against the borough and our.
Deductible was a hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay, I see you corrected there, Mr. Stewart.
And then the second part, the second part of those repairs, there was an additional thirty thousand dollars that was spent for extra drywall removal, which my understanding and discussions with Pro Action was to put insulation behind the interior wall and to do fire caulking around the pipes going up through the floor. Is, is that a correct information that I've gotten from Pro Action?
Yes.
So that, that is correct. There, that, that money was spent for those two reasons, correct?
That was to finish up the job with all the stuff that was missing. No fire stop, no insulation and, uh, disconnect of the ductwork and everything else. You've got, everything's in that file upstairs wherever you took it. I don't know where you put it. It was behind Mike Cassetti's desk. All the files were in line so that everybody could go in and look at it.
Well, the only, the only issue I would have with that additional work was is that additional work would not have been required by code. Is that the way that the building was designed, that the building was designed so that there was insulation placed in the core of the masonry unit. So there was insulation that was placed up under the eve of the roof. And, and there was no requirement for insulation to be placed behind the, the, the drywall and the interior walls.
Well, I disagree with you with that because John Lyman, myself, and well, I wasn't there. John Lyman and Phil Bolton, the inspector from Catania come down and said, who the hell did this job? So I'm gonna leave it at that. Do whatever you need to do. The documentation was there and the building is not up to code at the time. So we'll, we'll leave it there. That's fine.
Or is there a CO for the building?
Right. And there's no handicap accessibility for, for me to use the toilets on the second floor, so.
Well, further, further, further discussions with a code official who, who is qualified to do commercial inspection was is that the fire stop was not required because the floor is constructed of concrete, which is a non-combustible material. So therefore you don't need to be putting fire stop for that particular application, which is why no fire stop was there.
Who gave you that information?
The commercial building code inspector.
And who would that be?
A gentleman who works for Catania Engineering.
That's what I thought. Well, he was there, he inspected it. And that's the first words out of his mouth is, who done this job? And you can, and when you're ready to start, I'll bring, I'll bring the, the person who was there with him.
Ms. Catania, any comments?
If I unmute it, it would be more helpful. The only thing that I can tell you is when all of this was going on, um, I had said that there was no reason for, and for the insulation based on what I was told by the inspector. The gentleman that, that came out actually does not, only works for Catania Engineering Associates part-time. But he is highly qualified. He has a license to practice engineering. He also has twenty-four certifications through the U C C. He is allowed to do all reviews. He is allowed to do all inspections based on his certifications. Um, that's all I can say. I'm not getting into this fight because it's not my fight. Um, I can tell you that we did the design work. The design work was up to code. It was reviewed through L and I, so we have that documentation. And unfortunately, we're in a situation now where, where we have a he said, she said. I'm, wasn't there at the time and that's all I can tell you. I was asked to provide a, the gentleman who has all the certifications and he does, he actually teaches at the Code Academy. So he's highly qualified to make those kinds of calls. He's done reviews such as this. He did not do that review. He was not part of Catania Engineering when the firehouse was built. And, and I thought him, the. And and I thought him the most qualified to take a look at the information and determine. He met with Mr. Stewart. I did not meet with them. But I will tell you that he had noted, based on the on the design plans, that there was no need for the insulation. And I will tell you that he also talked about the fire stops that weren't necessary because of concrete. He told me that separately. So I don't, I don't know what else to say to that. That's all.
So Mr. Musa, what I would consider you to, you know, review whether it is appropriate to add to our demand list would be a 10% surcharge that was listed in the auditor's report for the original bid price of 24,000, or I shouldn't say bid price, or the original quoted price of $24,970. And then the additional 35,000 that was spent for unnecessary repairs, I believe should all fall on the shoulders of the former manager for failure to follow the proper procurement procedures.
All right, I'll take a look at that and be sure to brief the council at next week's exec session.
Any other new business? Public forum, any members of the of the public that we wish to address council this evening? Stevie G will give it a minute or two, and if nobody seems to make that indication, just give me a shout that says that you don't see anybody looking to address council.
I don't see any hand raised, Mr. Chairman. They can unmute themselves and speak if they'd like.
Ms. Jones, you've got the action items that we talked about this evening in addition to the regular action items we take at our regular meetings.
Yes.
Members of council, anything for the good of the cause, anything for the good of the group?
Happy spring coming up.
I'm not here.
No takers. Happy spring.
At this time, I'll ask for a motion during the meeting.
So ordered.
Seconded.
All in favor, Ike? Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, for your time.
Have a good night. Be safe.